Remain steadfast in the light. So steadfast, what does it mean? Unwavering, firmly fixed, constant in purpose, loyalty, and reserve. So I had a brain epiphany here. So to remain steadfast, but this is deep, y'all. You must remain steadfast. If you do not remain steadfast, you will not remain steadfast. Think about that. I mean, that's a little silly, but if you don't remain steadfast in the Word, you're gonna slide backwards. Anything that you work hard at, if you stop working hard at it, you're gonna suffer. You're going to suffer, you know? You're not gonna get where you need to be. So you can't slide backwards and expect to stay ahead. You can't do it. You have to remain steadfast. I wanna look at a scripture that's not in your book, but uh... So yeah, we're on Lesson 5, X B page 57. Does anybody need a book? We got, we got books in if, alright, let me see. I think I gotta put a couple in a little bit up here. Kylie, would you go look on my desk in there, please? Mr. Randy one. And uh, so 1 Corinthians 15, 58. The Word says, "Therefore, my beloved brethren..." So Paul here is talking to the church of Corinth, and just as applicable today, he's talking to us. "Therefore, my beloved brethren, be ye steadfast, unmovable, always abounding in what? The work of the Lord. Forasmuch as you know that your labor is not in vain in the Lord, you have to remain steadfast. You have to remain in the Word." When we back off, we lose our sensitivity. I mean, you know, if you are really striving to serve the Lord, especially if you have, you know, children and, you know, you're real careful what you allow on TV at your home. And then, you know, you go to somebody else's home. I'll give you an example. I went to somebody's home that, uh, one time, and I took my children. It was for like a retirement, maybe a retirement party or, or 50th anniversary. I forget what it was. And I walked in, there's kids all over the place. And guess what's on TV? The show Naked and Afraid. And guess what? They are naked. And, and they thought nothing of it, that the people did. And I grabbed my kids and said, "Let's go outside." And they're like, "What?" And I said, "Because they're stuck on TV that we don't need to watch." But people lose their sensi... And these are people that, that go to church. I don't know how regular, but we lose our sensitivity to things. And the next thing, you know, maybe go to somebody's house and, and man, the cuss words, the vulgarity, the things that are on TV, you know, the music that may be played, things that may be on the wall. And, you know, we lose our sensitivities. And if you don't think what you watch, what you listen to, what you expose yourself to, I don't care if it's one of these little ones to the teenagers, to the most senior adult in here, if you don't think that affects you in a negative or positive way according to what you're exposing yourself to, then you ain't being steadfast. You've lost your sensitivity. If you don't think that those things impact you, we have to remain steadfast. It says, "Unmovable, always abounding in the work of the Lord." You know, if you think, "Well, what does it matter? It's just a TV show." There's all kinds of things, seeds being planted in your mind and in your heart that will impact you in a negative way. Just like, you know, I mean, when I was growing up, Rocky. Man, every time I watched one of those movies, for about the next three weeks, I wanted to be a boxer. And then I got over it, you know, passed on because I quit watching them. When we watch things, when we expose ourselves to things, it, it, it plants things within us. And if you don't think that it doesn't negatively impact you, or I say, according to what you're exposing yourself to positively, you're not, you're not in the right mind of thinking there. 1 Peter, chapter 5, verse 9 through 11. Again, just wrapping around that definition of remaining steadfast or unwavering there. 1 Peter, chapter 5, verse 9 through 11, says, "Whom resists steadfast in the faith, knowing that the same afflictions are accomplished in your brethren that are in the world? But the God of all grace, who has called us into His eternal glory by Christ Jesus, after that they have suffered awhile, make you perfect or mature, established, you know, standing strong, strengthened, and settle you. To him be glory and dominion forever and ever." So like, you know, we talked about a lot of times, are the things that you are exposed to, are the things that you watch, are the things that you listen to, are they bringing any glory to God? Are they bringing any glory to God? I mean, is, is your relationship, think about this, is your relationship with the person sitting beside you, or the person that you're in a relationship with, does it help lift them up to the Lord? Does it help draw them closer to the Lord? Or does it help pull them away? Think about it. Think about those things. Are we remaining steadfast in the light? So that brings us to our first scripture there at the Bible Focus on top of page 58. 1, 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse 16 through 21. The scripture there says, "We did not follow cunningly devised fables, when we made known to you the power of coming of our Lord Jesus Christ." So the first thing is that we did not follow cunningly devised fables, or you know, we, we followed the truth. We didn't follow what was fake. "But were eyewitnesses of His majesty, for He received from God the Father honor and glory, when such a voice came to Him from the excellent glory. This is my beloved Son, in whom I am well pleased. And we heard this voice which came from heaven, which we were with Him on the Holy Mountain." They're saying, "Look, we're eyewitnesses. This ain't based on hearsay. This ain't based on tradition." You know, it's unfortunate at the mess that, that can happen in a church over tradition. Have anything to do with scripture? And a lot of times, people, they'll, they'll come to me, not a lot of times, sometimes people will come and they'll say, "Well, Brother Jason, this going on in my church? This, 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 this." Usually, one of the first things I ask, "Does that got anything to do with salvation? Does that have anything to do with salvation?" "Oh, no." "Why are you fussing, Alfred? I mean, why y'all arguing over it?" You know, sometimes we do. But they're telling, they say, "Look, we saw it, we heard it, and so we have the prophetic word confirmed." And, and we're gonna spend some time here in this lesson talking about the word prophecy. Most often, that is taken out of context in use of the scripture. We'll talk about that in a little bit. There, there's two meanings to it, but there's one primary meaning in the scriptures. And it says, again, "And so we have the prophetic word confirmed, which you do well, to heed as a light that shines in a dark place, until the day dawns and the morning star rises in your hearts." Knowing this verse, that no prophecy of scripture is of any private interpretation. There's no secrets. "For prophecy never came by the will of man, but by holy men of God spoke as they were moved by the Holy Spirit." So the first thing they were, they were reiterating here is, "We do not follow devised fables. We do not. They follow the truth." And John 14:6 says, the word of God says, "I am the way, the truth, and the life." Says, "No one comes to the Father," except by me. Jesus is being quoted there. He says, "We're following the truth." So where the trouble starts, let's look at Jude, chapter 4. And we're, if we're not careful, it's not Jude, chapter 4, Jude 4. If we're not careful, things will slip in, and it'll happen in, and through the church if we're not real careful. Jude 4 tells us, one more back, says, "For they, there are certain men crept in unawares, who were before of old ordained to this condemnation, ungodly men, turning the grace of our God into lasciviousness, and denying the only Lord God, our Lord Jesus Christ." So they're changing, it says, "turning," or changing. They crept in unawares. They come in and kind of blended in with the crowd, and then the next thing, they got in maybe a teaching position. And, you know, thankfully, we haven't had, at least, not that I know of, had any issues like this in the church, but I, I've talked to other people in other churches where they said, "Man, oh, so and so, he came in, and man, he was so involved and, and seemed knowledgeable, and, and the next thing you know, he was teaching a class, and, and man, we had to, we had to get rid of him." Because he started teaching, what it really talks about here, devised fables. He started teaching things that weren't of God. They weren't of God. You know, the, the whole predestination thing is taken out of context, and you know, people are, they call it Calvinist. That's something we gotta be real careful with, and that, that's, there's a vein of that in the Baptist churches. We have to be really careful. And if you're not sure what that's his, we can, we can talk more later, but I encourage you, you need to learn that, what that's about and what that's not about, because it'll creep in unawares instead of returning the grace of God, of our God into lasciviousness. And it's talking about, you know, preachers today that are doing that. This health, wealth, and prosperity gospel is not of God. False teachers rather quickly invaded the early church, some of them advocating a need for keeping all the Jewish law, others mixing in Christian doctrine with Greek philosophy, and some questioning the reliability of messages conveyed by the apostles. So they came into the church and, and they started saying, "See, the Jewish law, you're not saved by the Jewish law. You're not saved by a mixture of anything. You're saved by the bloodshed of Jesus Christ." And then they began to mix man's traditions, historical traditions, all these things mixed in with Christianity, and it began to cause division. And it said it had invaded in the early church, and it's still happening today. If you don't think the old devil won't plant somebody in this church, you've got another thing coming. He will do it. That is why it's so important that we study the Word, and why I'm really, I'm really concerned about, you know, getting the right teacher in our class, somebody that, that we, you know, feel strongly and confident in. And I mean, that's, you know, when you let somebody in the pulpit, you need to ask a whole lot of questions. And, uh, you know, I remember, I was gone one weekend, this was before I was your pastor, and I forget who it was, got up here and started preaching against Titan. Right here in Canyon. Y'all think about that. And I see, I see some heads nodding, you know, "That's, that's a thing of the past." Well, I don't know what half of the Bible he read, but he skipped the other half, apparently. You have to be careful. You have to be really careful. People will come in and be teaching things that are ungodly. So next, next paragraph down there, still on page 58. "Peter referred to perhaps the most stunning event of his experience with Jesus during Jesus' personal ministry, the transfiguration of Jesus, during which Peter, James, and John saw Jesus become radiant. He looked radiant in appearance." And we hear a couple of times of that in scriptures of that type of event happening, "while consulting with Moses and Elijah. They heard the voice of God proclaiming, 'This is my beloved Son, in whom I am well pleased.'" Hear him. Listen, Matthew 17:5 there. "So the accusations continued to day, that the accounts of Jesus's life were cunningly devised fables, and not only by man's logic. I mean, you know, just the fact people say, "There's no way he could have been born of a virgin." That's not humanly possible. Well, that is correct. It is not humanly possible. But see, the humans didn't do it with God. Did God intervene? The Holy Spirit intervened. And some people will just write things off. I mean, God is unlike anyone else. So there are our own experiences with the saving power of Jesus, no less miraculous than those of the first believers. The gospel message is the real truth. Again, John 14:6, Jesus says, "I am the way." And we've talked about that, you know, back, back in the Old Testament, prior to the book Acts, I forget the, the address there where the first time the word Christian was used, but prior to that, they were called, we were called followers of the way. So that's why Jesus says, "I am the way." And, and all through, you know, Christians always claimed to seek the truth. Jesus says, "I am the truth." And they were always seeking the light, you know, to follow the light, to be in the light, and the life. And, you know, we see the reference to life all the way through, and Jesus says, "I am the life, the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father." So Peter specifically used the word prophecy, which is not limited to the foretelling of the future, but here, and this is something we've talked about quite a bit in our classes, but primarily, the foretelling of God's word, that is sharing the word of God. That, that isn't telling some magical future event. That's, now, that, that is a small use of the word, but primarily, foretelling, foretelling of God's word. Prophecy is the proclamation of the truth of God and the expression of God's will in response to any human circumstance or behavior. So Peter made three statements about prophecy, that we are wise to heed. So the first thing, Jesus confirmed what all the Old Testament prophets said about the Messiah. The Holy Spirit had moved the writers of the scripture. So that word moved there, that the original's "fe ro," it's translated to "carry along," to sweep upward. The Holy Spirit perceived or uplifted the minds of those chosen to write the scriptures, giving these prophets a glimpse into the very heart and mind of God. God spoke through them. God wrote through them. That was not of anything that they had come up with on their own. It was God who initiated the prophetic word, His word. So we can trust the Holy Spirit today to raise our awareness to new heights, to understand the ways in which Jesus fulfilled all of God's great plan for reconciliation between man and God. On our own, we cannot fully understand the infinite love and mercy of God, but we can trust that His love and mercy were embodied in Christ Jesus, God made in flesh. So we talked about it this morning, you know, people are always hunting and searching for God's will. It's right here. This is what we, we have, nobody that we read of in the scriptures had this. They had the first few books, and that's it. We have so much more at our fingertips. We have the prophecy of God. We've got the will of God right here. Has it all come to pass? No, but it will. We have it right at our fingertips. So the first thing he said is, "God's," well, these, these writers were inspired by the Holy Spirit, giving them a glimpse into the very heart and mind of God. And I think the, I hadn't watched all of the series yet of Chosen, but I think that probably captures pretty well what, what, how some of those writings were put together. So I encourage you, but those are pretty good little shows there. Second thing, Peter admonished the church to heed the prophecies as a light that shines in a dark place, "until the day dawns and the morning star rises in your hearts." So we do not need to know in order to believe. You know, what's the definition of faith? Hebrews 11, chapter 1. It's the evidence of things hoped for, things not seen. You know, and that's, that's a scripture that's often used at funeral services. And see, here, in this life, you know, our, our faith is what we haven't seen, but in death, our faith in Christ, in death, our faith becomes our sight. So here, we believe in what we haven't seen. So Peter admonished the church again to heed the prophecies as light. "And when does the light shine the brightest? When everything around it is the most dark." I mean, you walk out in the middle of the night, and you turn a light on, verses, and then go turn it on during the day. Can't hardly see it. So there's a third thing that he pointed out here. "No prophecy is, is subject to private interpretation." Something we have to be real careful with. In the Old Testament, one of the marks of a false prophet was that he spoke his own words rather than the words of God. The prophet here, Jeremiah, said of false prophets, "They speak a vision of their own heart, not from the mouth of the Lord." A lot of people nowadays are trying to water down sin. They're trying to take, "Oh, well, you know, I mean, I know that was what it said in the Bible, but, you know, things are different now." You know, people are wanting to do away with the word of God, and, and they're changing it. I mean, they're, they're giving, they're, they're giving human traits to animals in some of the, the newer versions. They are not interpretations. They're just a version. And we have to be really careful. Really careful there. So every word that we hear from the Lord, we must verify against the scriptures. Jeremiah 23:16 talks about that. Let's look at 1 John, chapter 4, and verse 1. We spent a lot of time in Little Johns this morning. So what is, is your job? What is our job as a Christian? 1 John, chapter 4, verse 1, of 11. "Believe not every spirit, but try the spirits, whether they're of God." Because many false prophets are gone out into the world, many. So, so the only way, I mean, again, the only way you're gonna know the Word is to, to know the Word. And the better you get to know the Word, the better you're gonna get to know the Lord. So we're wise to verify what we believe. Let's back up, look at James, chapter 1, verse 5 and 6. You know, these, these scriptures we're looking at are not in the lesson, but just ones that I thought of while I was reading through my notes. James, chapter 1, verse 5 and 6. "If any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, that giveth to all men liberally, and abraiteth not, and it shall be given him." Verse 6. "But let him ask in faith." See, sometimes we ask, we have some ulterior motives as to why we're asking something and why we're seeking something, and we need to be really careful about that. "But let him ask in faith, nothing wavering; for he that waveth is like a wave of sea, driven with the wind and tossed." So we need to try the spirits, but we need to, we, if we lack wisdom, we need to ask it of God, seek it of God. But are we seeking God's word? I have, you know, so many people, they, you know, they want, "What, what's a good book?" Not this book, but a good book. And there are some good ones out there, but we need to, we need to spend more time in the book, you know, we do in everything else. Be careful with that, because there's some things out there that are, again, not of God. "True prophecy," Peter said, "never came by the will of man." So top of page 60 there. So here, I'm gonna start at the bottom of page 59, but catch up to you. "Peter not only gave us greater understanding about how we each should approach scripture and about the prophecies related to Christ Jesus, but also gave us insight into how we might evaluate the words others give us as prophecies from the Lord." You know, we've gotten real comfortable as Christians today that a lot don't even bring a Bible to church. I mean, you need to, you need to take what is said, and, and you need to look into the scriptures and make sure it matches up. That's your responsibility as an individual. That's your responsibility to get in. So check, it says, what is said against the scripture. Check the motivation of the speaker and the way in which the speaker came to his or her message. And, you know, I can remember a time, I probably used this example before, this has been 20, over, over 21 years ago, because I've been with the government, 21. And prior to that, I worked for Boise Timber Company, and I can remember, there was a church down in Bullard Parish that was, people were selling everything they had and giving it to the church. That preacher would come, he might come and say, "Brother Corey, the Lord came to me a vision last night. We need to go sell your truck. The church needs a new, a new drum set." And buddy, they just do it. There's some, there's some impure motivation there. You know, we need, you need back, whoa, no, no. Wait a second. If people were doing it though, I'm telling you, hand over fist, were selling things they had, and, and going and pouring money into the church. And, uh, so check the motivation of the speaker and the way in which the speaker came to his or her message. Check what other godly people have said or are saying on the same subject. You know, you need to have a godly mentor to be able to go to, to, to be able to, to lean on, to ask questions. So that's, that's what we need to, you know, everybody in accountability department, we need to have that too. But check what other godly people have said or are saying on the same subject. You know, you might, you might hear a preacher talk about a verse in scripture, and you're like, "Man, I ain't ever heard that put to, to that way." So go to somebody else and say, "Look, you know, Brother Jason said, 'Is this true?'" "No, no, that's, that's way off. That's wrong." You know, you need to have somebody to go to. You need to be able to dig in. Where do the words lead? So if the words ultimately are not leading to Christ, then there's a definite problem. If the words ultimately are not leading to Christ, or leading you closer to Christ, then there is a problem. "False teachers are no less common to our churches today than they were to the churches" Peter addressed. False teachers are no less common today. So we need to really be careful. And I, and I hear it so often, and I hear, you know, church going, solid church going people say, "Well, at least they're going to church." I mean, how many times have, who has heard that in here? I ain't gonna ask who said it, but, I mean, you've heard that, and that is not always a good thing. I'd rather somebody stay at the house and read the scripture than I had go sit in a church that is leading them down a false path, down a false path. So just because they're going to church doesn't always mean it's a good thing. You know, if you haven't moved around, you, you don't realize how many churches aren't necessarily pushing the truth. They're pushing a lot of other things. You know, be really careful. And, you know, and I hear people reference, you know, certain preachers and speakers, and I'm like, "But do you know what they believe? Or do you know what they don't believe? And, oh, well, gosh, I didn't even know. I had no idea." So we need, we need to know. So we need to be ready. The Bible says, "In season and out." Let's look at 2 Timothy, chapter 4. You know, because I assure you, you know, if you give yourself, make yourself available to the Lord, He would use you. And I've shared, you know, example where this came to real life example in my life a couple of times. This, 2 Peter, excuse me, 2 Timothy, chapter 4, verse 2. Preach the word. And, you know, some would say, "Well, man, I'm not a preacher, but..." We're all a type of minister. Because the word minister, if you look it up by definition, simply means one who serves. That's what the word means. So preach the word, be instant or ready, in season, out of season. Reprieve, rebuke, exhort with all long suffering and doctrine. It's a reference back to the scripture. So we have to know the scripture, but you have to be ready, in season and out. You never know when God is gonna give you an opportunity to witness, an opportunity to, to preach. You know, I shared that with y'all up in Arkansas, and, uh, you know, when the preacher couldn't show up, and I had two hours notice to preach at a, at a Wild Game banquet. And just, just so happy, I mean, the Lord lined it all up. I had, I always carry my little notebooks, at least a couple of them. And, uh, and God appointed that time, and, and I got to preach, I don't know, just, just a hair more than a moment's notice. And, and that was in a time when I was scared to death to have my voice amplified. But, uh, God got me through it. But we need to know the truth. We need to be able to dig in. Now, back up, 2 Timothy, chapter 3, verse 16 and 17. So what do we need to compare things to? "All scripture is given by inspiration of God. It is profitable," means it's worth a whole bunch, "for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness." So the Bible is not a collection of stories and fables and myths or merely human ideas about God, is not just a human book. Through the Holy Spirit, God revealed His person and plan to these certain believers that, that put the Bible together, who wrote down God's message for His people. So this is, it was inspired completely by God, and the scripture is lined up to help us, and is profitable for doctrine, for reproof, for correction, for instruction in righteousness, because the Bible says so. Ain't that right? Romans, chapter 14. Past old Romans up. Romans, chapter 14, verse 12. "So that every one of us shall give an account of himself to God." And we could spend a lot of time right there, but we need to be ready. We need to be ready to give an account, and, you know, when somebody comes to us and asks us, you know, we talked about this, I think, maybe last Sunday, or maybe it was Wednesday, about, you know, people may come to you and say, "Well, why do you go to church? Why do you go? Why would you recommend I go? Why would you recommend I go to that church?" Be able to, be, be ready to give an account, be ready to give an answer. I, I love this little application, this little story right here. Normally, I wouldn't read the whole thing, but it's really a good one. And, uh, it says, "How do you know that a six-year-old girl asked her older friend, who had just ratted off the multiplication tables from 1 times 1 to 9 times 8? 'I learned it in school,' the older girl said, matter-of-factly." Well, how do you know that nine times, and this sounds just like a, I could hear this conversation going, maybe between Charlie and Kylie. I mean, you, you just put some people in it. "But how do you know that 9 times 8 is 72?" Asked the younger girl. The older girl couldn't come up with a quick answer, other than to say, "I just know it. When you get to third grade, you'll know too." I mean, and that, that's, you know, we, I think there's probably some biblical answers like this. "The younger girl went home and asked her father, 'Do you believe 9 times 8 is 72?' And he's like, 'What a question.'" And I, I could picture it, that'd be my kid coming home. I mean, not, "Hey Dad, how you doing, anything?" It'd just, bam. That's what they would ask. "Her, her father said light-heartedly and in surprise, 'Who told you about the times tables?'" Of course, this, the first thing he was surprised for, how in the world you even, nobody even talked about that. "The little girl replied, 'Angie said 9 times 8 is 72. What do you say?'" Her father took a blank piece of paper and pen and sat down. Her father took a blank piece of paper and pen and sat down with his daughter. He drew dots on the paper and showed his daughter how a grid of dots, that was nine dots across, eight dots down, produced seventy-two dots. So, the little girl said, after sitting through her father's fairly lengthy explanation and counting all the dots on the page, you believe nine times eight is seventy-two? Yes, said her father. Well, the little girl said, why didn't you just say so? You know, and sometimes we, 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 we try to answer a question and, and we may cause more confusion than we do good by not just saying, because I believe, because I believe. And, and, and she's, why didn't you just say so? You know, do we believe when Jesus says so? So many things we question in the Scripture. And, and, and Jesus said so. I mean, because Jesus said so, that's, that's a great answer. But the little girl hadn't wanted to learn the multiplication tables or the mathematical rationale for them. She had just wanted to know what her father believed. If he said nine times eight is seventy-two, it surely must be. And we need to be that person that somebody can come to and say, you know, Brother John, I, I got a question for you. Do you believe this? Rather than giving this big, long explanation, yes, absolutely I do. With all of my heart, with everything in me, I do. So here's the question, in what areas of your faith walk with Christ Jesus, is it enough simply to believe without questioning? A lot of times we question God. You know, my, my Friday devotion was out of Luke, chapter one, verse thirty-eight, last Friday. When the, the angel had come, and we're studying that on, uh, Wednesdays. The angel come to Mary, and Mary asked God a couple of questions, or asked the angel a couple of questions. One was like, there's no way, how can this be? And, and, and the angel simply said, the Holy Spirit is gonna come upon you. She says, I don't get it, but I believe you. And she says, be it unto me. Be it unto me. When, when the Lord has said it, do we really believe it? In what areas should we question in order to learn more about Christ? In what ways should all of our learning be geared toward a greater depth of ability to believe? And, and I, I've shared an example before where, you know, I was trying to dig into the Scriptures to be able to get at somebody one time. It's been, I don't know, fifteen years ago. And I found, you know, when, when you're, when you're having some unrighteous anger moments, you can look at Scripture and take it way out of context and try to use it against somebody if you're not careful what the Scripture says. I know it says what you just said, but it don't mean what you just said. You know, that's what happens and, and, you know, God, God repaired me there, fixed me there, got me back where I needed to be. But we need to know what the Word of God says, and we need to know what it means. But if we don't dive in, if we are not, as, as the title says, if we don't remain steadfast in the light, unwavering, firmly fixed, constant in purpose, loyalty and resolve. Because sometimes we're on a mission and we ain't being loyal to Christ. We're being loyal to someone else, to something else, and the old devil's gonna jump on that. And he's gonna help you right on down that path to wrongness. And then you go mess around and lead people away from the Lord. So supplementary Scripture, we'll get, we'll get, dive into this just a little bit. We won't make it too far, but, uh, supplementary Scriptures. Peter said this about Christ, and if you call on the Father, who without partiality judges according to each one's work, conduct yourselves throughout the time of your staying here in fear, knowing that you were not redeemed with corruptible things like silver or gold. But what would this society think that, uh, success is defined by? Silver and gold still today? See, that was a problem back in Peter's day. People thought, well, if you got money, you got it made. And he says, those are corruptible things. And I love what Jesus, uh, said, said he's gonna do with, with gold. He's gonna pave the streets with it. That's what he thinks about it. From your aimless conduct, so, said, you, you were not redeemed with corruptible things like silver and gold from your aimless conduct received by tradition from your fathers, but with the precious blood of Christ. As of a lamb without blemish, without spot, he indeed was foreordained, so the plan was always there. Jesus died on the cross, what now, uh-oh, we gotta do something else. So we'll call in Jesus. He was foreordained, the plan was already in place before the foundation of the world, but was manifested, was brought to pass in these last times for you who through him, through Jesus, believe in God, who raised him, Jesus, from the dead and gave him glory, so that your faith and hope are in God, that's your assurance. So what is, what was, it's all for us, for our faith. So Peter made it very clear that a person cannot buy his way into salvation or redeem himself through any corruptible things or works. You know, people say, and, and I, I hear people, and, and people that go to church say, oh, man, I hope I've done enough good. Hope I've done more good than, I hope when the balance is laid out, my good will outweigh my bad. That is not the way to heaven. That is not the way to heaven for anybody. Never was, never will be. Have you ever encountered teachings regarding things a person must do in order to earn salvation? Many churches still today, January, whatever it is, two thousand twenty-two, teach Jesus plus. And I speak out against that every chance I get. It is not Jesus plus anything. It is not Jesus plus proof of this magical gift. That is not Scripture. Matter of fact, there's Scripture that warns against that. So how do you respond again? Have you ever think about this? Have you ever encountered teachings regarding things a person must do? Or so man says, in order to earn salvation? And how did you respond? You know, we need to have, you know, where, where we read the Scriptures a while ago, we need to be ready to give an account. We need to, to try the spirits. We need to, if, if we lack wisdom, we need to seek that wisdom. But there's still churches today. See, the Lord ain't done, but the devil ain't either. He's still working too. The Bible says he's going to and fro, to and fro. So top of page, uh, sixty-two there. The phrase, foreordained before the foundation of the world, what does this mean to you? Anybody? That's right. He knew, the plan was instituted from the beginning. Again, there, there was no, there is no plan B at all. What you got? Oh. There is no plan B. So it has been instituted from the very beginning. He taught. He is taught, the Lord, Christ is, is front to back, start to finish, he is there. So there is no plan B. Second point there, Peter wrote that God our Father, without partiality judges according to each one's work. If we cannot work our way into salvation, what is it God the Father is judging us in? And what is in? And I want to just look at a few Scriptures and this will probably get us to the end of, of, of today. Romans, chapter two. Verse eleven through sixteen, Romans, chapter two. Somebody wanna read some Scriptures?
Eleven through sixteen?
Yes, sir. Romans two, eleven through sixteen.
For there is no respect to persons with God, for as many as have sinned without law shall also perish without law, and as many as have sinned in the law shall be judged by the law. For not the heirs of, peers of the law are just before God, and the builders of the law shall be justified. For when the Gentiles, which have, which have not the law, do by nature the things contained in the law, these having not the law are ill unto themselves, which show the work of the law written in their hearts, their conscience also bearing, witnessing their thoughts demean while accusing or else excusing one another. In the day when God shall judge the sins of men by Jesus Christ according to my gospel.
So the way I see it, if you want to be judged by your works, I'm judged by your works. And your works aren't gonna get you very far. It said here, you know, people that are dependent on the law, that they're not gonna make it very far. People that are dependent on themselves, they're not gonna make it very far. It, it, it is a, a sad place to be headed. Uh, look at Acts now, chapter ten, verse thirty-four. Somebody wanna read that one? Yeah, Acts, chapter ten, verse thirty-four.
Then Peter opened his mouth and said of the truth, I perceive that God is no respecter of persons.
So just, just thinking of, without partiality, the Lord is no respecter of persons. And, and what does that mean? That, that he ain't, he ain't, he, he's not holding one up over the other. When it comes to anything you can do, to anything you have, whatever, social status, financial status, any of those things, there is no prejudice in the Lord. Of a truth, I perceive that God is no respecter of persons, zero. It comes down to, to who we look to, what we look to for salvation. Now look at James, chapter two, and verse nine. Somebody want that one?
But if you have respect to persons, you commit sin and are convinced of the law as transgressors.
So again, man's, man, little reference to man's law there. So, you know, I, I've even heard people try to point to basically, uh, uh, an embracement of, of racism and, and slavery in the Scriptures, which is so untrue. Now, is it mentioned? Yes. But it was never, ever biblically prescribed and, and to say that, that Jesus was anything other than loved to everyone, died for everyone. James, chapter two, and verse nine, says, but, but if you have, and now he's telling it to us, but if you have respect of persons, you know, if you're putting someone above somebody else, you commit sin and are convinced of the law as a transgressor, as transgressors. So without partiality, God looks at everybody on even playing field, even playing field. You have a life with Christ or you do not. If you want to be judged by your works, you will. And, and those works, the law, whatever you wanna hang your hat on there, uh, will get you in a bad place, right? Ephesians, chapter two. Somebody could probably have, have these memorized, verses eight to nine. People think they could work, you know, Jesus plus something else. Ephesians, chapter two, verse eight to nine.
For my grace is saved through faith, and that all of yourselves is the gift of God. All of works, lest any man should boast.
See, we don't work to get salvation. We, we know this, we talk about it a whole lot. We work because we have salvation. We serve because we have salvation. It is not of works. It's Jesus plus nothing. You didn't do anything to earn it. He did it, free gift. So nothing we can do. Peter's very clear on that. You know, there, there's no plan B. And, uh, why, why is it that churches still today are teaching Jesus plus? Why is it that people are questioning the Lord's salvation? I mean, he says, for whosoever, whosoever believes shall not perish but have everlasting life. Yet we still have churches that will argue over the eternal security of a believer. Oh, so what you're saying is Jesus' blood wasn't enough? No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. No, yes, that's what you're saying. If, if, if you can lose what Jesus died for, then you're saying his blood wasn't enough. And, and that's one of those things, there's, there's no room for argument. It just, it, the, the word says it, and I believe it. The word says that, that he died, that gives us this eternal opportunity, uh, for, for every one of us to receive. And we'll finish up that last one there, the last bullet. How was Jesus manifested to you so that you made the decision to believe in him and put your faith in him? Your faith and hope in God? You know, I've shared with most all of you, my, my testimony is, is one of my friends, you know? I had been under conviction and did not really, I, I didn't realize, honestly, I did not know that I had been under conviction. But little things, you know, people have been planting little seeds and then, and then one day, one of my buddies just called, says, man, I'm worried. If you die, you're gonna go to hell. And, and, and the way you're living right now, you're on a path straight there. And, and, and then kind of all that, that conviction started coming together and, and to realization. And, and I said, well, what do I need to do? What do I need to do? And, and one of the first verses that I ever remember reading, and he was a new Christian too, Matthew, chapter six, verse six. But see, so many, so many, and I, and it ain't just young people, teenagers, I see adults do it too. You live like, man, tomorrow's never gonna come, you just, just do whatever you want, and you ain't got no impact. Matthew, chapter six, buddy, we're, we're, we're impacted people. I read Matthew, chapter six, verse six. Says, but thou, when thou prayest, enter into thy closet, when thou hast shut thy door, pray to the Father which is in secret, and the Father which sees in secret shall reward thee openly. You know, I got down on my knees in November nineteen ninety-eight. And I said, Lord, I was just me by myself. I started reading and I got a voucher right here and, and just talking about just, you know, getting in your prayer closet. And I called out to God and I said, I don't understand everything, but I know, I don't know he is my Savior. Will you save me, Lord? And the Lord began to, it definitely, I could say that he began to reward me openly. Took me a long time to see a lot of it. But God can use you, but so can the devil. You've got to be careful. You've got to be careful. And Peter says, there are, there are many that have, have slipped in, many, many false teachers. But, but if, if church isn't a serious thing to us, if studying the Word of God isn't a serious thing to us, you, you are, you are setting yourself up for failure. You're setting yourself up to fall in a trap that is gonna cause a lot of damage. And if we're not careful, we end up leading other people down a path to hell. So we need to know the Word. All right, we're gonna stop right there. So we'll pick back up where Peter said this about the Word of God, and, uh, we'll pick back up next Sunday night. So any final thoughts or questions? So no plan B. Check what is said against Scripture. Check the motivation of the speaker and the way in which the speaker came to his or her message. I mean, that makes me think of John Smith, Joey Smith, uh, that, that founded Mormonism. How, how did he come to his or her message? He says, an angel of the Lord brought me these tablets. Well, he changed it up. He said, an angel of the Lord led me to write these words. And another one, he said, they brought me tablets and then destroyed them. That, that, that is completely against the Word of God. You go over and look it up in the Galatians and you'll see it. But check what other godly people have said or are saying in the same subject. You don't need to find, go hunt somebody that's gonna agree with you. You need to find somebody that's gonna tell you that God's honest truth. So let's think. So we'll be back Wednesday for Wannas and be praying, be praying for our, our missionaries and, uh, what they'll be sharing with us there. Be praying for our children's ministry, be praying for just the old sickness, the crud, the, 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 the rona, whatever, all that's going around. Just be praying for people's health and strength to get through that. Somebody wanna close us anywhere? Right, Paul?
Father, we come to you again, Father, just thank you this day, Father, we thank you for this morning service, Father. What we received from you, Father, we thank you again for the blessing this evening, Father, for the study of Peter tonight, Father. And Father, you just continue to guide us and keep us, Father, where you would have us in our walking through, Father. And, and, Father, you bring all those who have lost loved ones, Father, those that are sick, Father, we ask for a healing reach, Father. But above all, Father, we ask your will be done in our lives and in their lives, Father. And as he will say, thank you, my precious, thank you, Jesus.